Budget.
Yeah, just use an old one. Just made a few tweaks.
Yeah, that, not too many changes. Nope, we, we finished it. We finished it. The changes that we made after the last work session was we put the detective back in full-time in the police department. We've taken a look at the bank stabilization project at the golf course and reduced that amount down to just two out of the four sites that would need to be repaired.
Two out of five.
Two out of the five sites to be repaired. So that reduced that amount down from yeah, four hundred down to two-ten. That's on page forty. And then we also took a look at what we perceive to be the FEMA reimbursement for those two sites and increased that from sixty to ninety-one. Two.
Two-ten.
Two-ten. And that would be on hole thirteen. Just to the west of the tee box and then about half, two-thirds of the way down the fairway. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not confident FEMA will do cover eleven, but if they come back, I had quite a bit of communication with them last week and getting them information and if they come back and they're gonna pay it, then we can relook at it, but.
So with those changes, the, the general fund balances. So we're, we're reducing the transfer to the golf course out of the general fund since we reduced that bank stabilization project. Reduced it from eight, the transfer out for the golf course, the core ironwood, redwood, from eight forty-one down to eight eleven.
I gave you a new sheet that would add in the detective. So you're right, health insurance only would be around six, eight, seventy-nine, five-eight. Nope, that includes re, the five percent. I don't have retirees aren't included here. Retirees don't go to expenditure at all, I didn't know.
Okay, so this number this year was five seventy-three, is that right? And now we're at six seventy-nine, so that's eighteen percent.
Well, that's, that's not gonna happen because you've got folks that have changed coverage, plus you've got two new employees coming on board.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the first column there when we did the plan redo, it was at five ninety-seven. And then you add that second column in there with all new plan changes, that adds eighty-two thousand and two new employees on there, you're at six seventy-nine.
I think eighteen percent is a lot.
Correct. We're working on some ideas that we could certainly present.
So now Casey and Julie today to come up with some ideas to do some cost savings for the city, so I'm planning to have something to present to you in the next month, probably.
But if you, if you, if you pick a number, whatever that number is, and you budget a six percent increase and the premiums come in at ten, are you gonna go back and change that policy again? Because you're gonna be over budget. So if you say employees pick up ten percent of the premiums, and I'm just throwing it out there, and you had, you, you said your budget and you think you're gonna spend six hundred thousand on that and the renewal rate is terrible because it's whatever and it comes in at six fifty, what are you gonna do? Because that's, that's the same scenario that we've got now. But so does the city. So does the employer. So if you budget a ten, if you budget a ten percent increase in premiums and you don't change, and you have your employees paying X percent, whatever the percentage is, twenty, twenty-five percent, whatever, and your premiums go up twenty percent, the city's costs are gonna go up as well unless you modify your policy again. July. Yep, June thirty. They have preventative care services for free. Physicals are all free. I'm pretty sure the preventative care is already covered because I had a patient who didn't pay a dime.
We already get some. From right now, there might be some added, but we do get some from.
And do, do you really want employees not going to the doctor when they need to? Well, I'd like, if they're sick, I'd like them to go to the doctor so they don't pass it on to everybody else. If they have to pick up more of that cost, they're gonna have, they're gonna hesitate to go to the doctor. I don't think our staff is over abusing going to the doctor. We've been very consistent over the last ten to twenty years as to how many people meet their deductible. I don't see a lot of elective surgeries that are driving up the price. I don't see a lot of sick leave being taken. I think you're guessing that they're abusing the healthcare.
What percentage, what percentage we want the employees to pay? Because the last time we went through this part, you said, we wanted to see meat in the game. And we, we came up with this and it was put out there that five percent, you were happy with five percent, they had meat in the game. And now, now we're back here again discussing this. They've got meat in the game starting in January. So how much, how much more meat we gave, you want them to have? Give me a percent of it. Give them a percent. If we have a budget for the golf course and every year we're throwing a lot of money into the ball, should we give the employees the ball? Should we say, say, well, you gotta operate on this amount. You're not gonna get a dime more, it's under price month. You're not gonna get a dime more. Can't operate, you're done. And where do you, where do you draw money? We throw a lot of money, I mean, over a million dollars in the last number of years into the golf course because the golf course pays. And every year we come along and say, yep, we're gonna throw a lot of money into the golf course. And I'm not getting down on the golf. I'm not doing the golf course purposely under the bucks.
Right?
I mean, they know it's super volatile.
Does it cause consternation? I mean, of course there, I mean.
We should do what your contracts, you're going to do it like if your health insurance go up and then when you read current contracts out and it would have an entire increase rate and maybe to compensate for that. Does it work that way? But you could hold on contracts up here.
Well, it's part of the, well, kind of, obviously, it's not, you know, many, if, you know, that's for health insurance, it's a lot more than legal, I mean, it's all, it's all damage. To answer your question, if you're paying more, yeah, maybe that thirty percent goes up and that seventy percent obviously goes up twice by the year, so it's a little bit more probable for your party than for your, like, you should probably call it for work. But our percentage is probably a chance of one.
So the way it stands right now, we get a balanced budget?
Yep.
He's not first.
Correct.
I'd like to go back to police wages for, in federal law counsel, where there was a position posted, a county that was less, that starting wage pays more than currently have an officer of nine years making with full benefits. I understand there are different benefits, some pieces of budget are better, some are less, and also get far. Um, we've talked, we've talked a little bit about this and, um, Chief, if I could ask you maybe, I think you kind of had like an idea of a potential compromise between first two balls exam, which is our biggest threat in Florida.
In looking at Sioux Falls wages, I was trying to find some way that we could at least put a dollar figure on what would be a fair and equitable resolution to the disparity. And so I looked at it and tried to try to find a way to comparably kind of bridge the gap, but not totally fill the gap in. And so I was just communicated to you that we could change some step levels, some line levels, not, uh, line levels, not steps, that would basically, uh, fill some of the gap and it equates to about a $2.58 on average between all the positions, uh, other than mine. Uh, and that would result in a, an increase of about eighty-two thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, including the, uh, associated taxes and stuff with that increase. That would, uh, there's about a $5.11 gap between, uh, Brandon officers and, uh, new officers, Sioux Falls PD. So $2.58 seemed like a kind of nice middle of the road from an existing, uh, line level on the city's pay schedule. If that makes sense. But I was trying to just put a quantified number on what that would cost to, to at least fill half the gap.
I think that's very fair. I guess still, live here tomorrow, we'll look at Sioux Falls. The next day, pretty much the same pool. I don't know how the rest of council feels, but like I stated, a meeting or two low infrastructure, what we say here, my two priorities and I just, I feel and have felt for the entire time I've been on council that our officers are very underpaid. And I'm concerned, I'm concerned about what's going to happen if they continue to be underpaid and these postings continue to rise up around us. I want to keep the good officers that we have and not have to go through, uh, extensive costs, uh, training for an officer. Uh, Chief, where, I mean, I think you might have spoke to this once in the past, what, what do we look at?
Well, and you, you have, you lose an officer, uh, you takes, uh, field training program about three months, uh, and also academy training program of three months. And so you're usually paying that salary while they're not in a functioning, uh, isolated position. They're shadowing with another officer for three months and then going to the academy for three months. So while they're at the academy, you have overtime costs and you potentially have additional overtime costs when they're in a field training program and they can't, uh, back up or serve a singular, uh, position. So that, that's associated cost and every time you hire a new officer, you have, uh, related, uh, officer uniform costs and so forth that, and training costs that, uh, usually provided supplemental to the academy. And I would note that, uh, I just negotiated my salary about a year and a half ago and so this would not involve any, uh, pay increase for myself. And, uh, I didn't, uh, properly really consult with the, uh, city administrator, but, uh, I was just trying to put a dollar number on what any potential, uh, bridge might, might be.
What's the retention rate?
I, I don't know what it is historically, um, and maybe Dave could do.
Retention rate, what's the retention rate? How many years are these officers here?
The retention rate for our officers?
Yeah.
Um, what, I guess one thing I could say is we haven't lost anybody. We've lost, uh, we've lost person to highway patrol, lost person to, uh, the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office. Jamie went to Florida, that was, robbed by his, his wife. Um, I think others.
You've lost others, but they weren't the only.
Well, all right, yeah, well, there was a Rob ruling, he went to Yankton, but that was to be closer to his, uh, his daughter, or he had a daughter in Nebraska, right, right across the border. One, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
In, in your opinion, Dave, is, is a wage the only motivation to get somebody to, gee, sir, pardon me?
In my, in, in my opinion, out, out of wages, wages across the board, and that's, and that's really where I want to see this address, is across the board, if you look at all the departments rather than a person going out, you know, because then you, you run into, you know, there for a while in Sioux Falls, you had the police department lying against, fire department lying against the, uh, the rest of the city, and we had three different unions. And, uh, kind of, they were playing each other off of each, uh, uh, I didn't think it was a, a good situation. You had, you had people out, and all of a sudden, fire department got this bigger raise than the police department, than the, the police officer, so, or place, or, or the rest of the people. I'd like to see this addressed and I'd like to see it addressed for the, for the, uh, this, this way. Uh, one of the things that you have advantage of, with Sioux Falls Police Department right now, is most of our people are following our shifts, things they can every other weekend, a lot of Sioux Falls Police Department, they're looking at changing their schedule, but it's a huge, it's a huge machine, you know, it's like that big ship, you know, you just can't turn it on a dime. So they're looking at trying to, trying to do some work with our shifts, but shift officers are working eight-hour days, five days a week. They get Tuesday, Wednesday, a lot, but Wednesday, Thursday, a lot, and fully bill plus inori, they don't, they get a lot. And I know that that's a, that's a huge point with, uh, Sioux Falls officers, a lot of problems that they're having with, uh, some of their pensions. People are getting there and they go, God, I have to do this ten years now, they, I don't get regular payments, so I'm going to the department again. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of, you know, you can compare this with that and everything. Um, what I, what I love to see with the, the police officer to get a, get a raise, that's certainly, um, at the same time, I, I prefer the rest of us, the rest of the city, and not this, this department gets its parking attached.
I think we need to get our own money so that we can do something, because otherwise that's, I mean, we've been talking about this for two years since we did the last wage study. And then the, the argument's going to be that we don't have any budget to make it right, I guess. So I guess I before we finalize the budget, I think we can mark some money in here to cover some of the shortcomings. And, and of all years, you know, if it weren't for the, the police, we wouldn't be receiving this nine-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars in COVID dollars.
That's got nothing to do with wages.
No.
That's, that's irrelevant. It is, but it's irrelevant to a discussion on wages. That's a one-time freebie from the feds. Wage, it is, but, but wages are an ongoing expenditure. So you can't credit the police department with getting that. We had nothing to do with that. That was federal government that decided those regulations. And quite frankly, if they're reimbursing for exposure, potential exposure to COVID, all of the employees in the city should get it. Because the wastewater guys are down there in the sewer where they're finding tons of COVID. We have more contacts in the office, uh, with people coming in from the public. So we can't control that the feds granted us $900,000. That's not a bonus for the police department. That's a bonus for the city that we have to use someplace else.
But can we, can we take some of that money and, I mean, is sitting in the general, I mean, it's extra money that's sitting in the general budget?
Correct.
And so, and I, I don't know that it's appropriate to use it for salary, because that's an ongoing expense, but is it appropriate to use it for a one-time project that then might free up some money for salary?
Potentially, yes. You know, I've always, I've always cautioned the council, if it's a one-time grant, you don't use it to fund ongoing expenditures. Use it for a one-time project.
So could it, as an example, could it be used for some of our infrastructure needs and then that would free up some money that would be in the budget for salary?
It, it certainly could. Um, we have been working on salaries and wages, trying to get things normalized for about seven or eight years. When I came here, the salaries were all over the place. We had people work in the same positions that were being paid vastly different amounts. They weren't even on the same line. Some of them were two or three lines off. We have worked extremely hard over the last few years to get everybody normalized into a position. Julie is taking the, the wage study and we are trying to develop a comprehensive wage structure for the city. So that everybody will be plugged into it in the future. Now, for instance, just as an example, yes, we have some, some folks that are underpaid, but our benefit package ranges anywhere from a dollar to three bucks an hour. So that goes directly to take home. So if you're underpaid by three dollars an hour and you're getting three dollars an hour benefit in health insurance, you're kind of even.
But doesn't make sense to, uh, for making appropriate wages, because then they're overpaid by that analogy.
You could, you could say that. Are, are our people overpaid? No, they are not. None of our positions are overpaid.
You can't say that it's okay to use that justification for people that are underpaid, when we have people that are paid okay and they're receiving the same benefits that are worth three dollars.
My argument is that I don't think we have any people that are underpaid in the city. Overpaid. Yep, it's, it's comparable to long, longevity pay, as people, it's called in the, in the. Hundred dollars a year or. So a lot of municipalities call it longevity pay. After X number of years, you get a, a, a one-time stipend payment at the end of the year. Yep. So it doesn't go onto the base.
That makes sense. I, no, I get that.
Potential.
I think if, if memory serves me correctly, the wages that were discussed amounted to eighty thousand. If the police department got a raise of the two dollars or whatever an hour, it was about eighty grand.
About eighty-two.
Eighty-two thousand. So you will need to find eighty-two thousand somewhere in the budget.
Can I say, let's pull some across. I don't think we need all of that money in terms of, sorry, I heard that way to my. Not necessarily for salaries, you think there's something else? I mean, it's a, it's a Shelby, I mean, just move it around.
Well, I, I, I think we can always make adjustments or amend the budget after it's adopted. I think I would caution the council to make any decisions on spending fund balance until we get through the CIP process. I think you are going to be somewhat shocked about the amount of money that we will need just for, just for normal cash flow for these projects.
Well, if you pause the chair out here, can we ask?
Yeah, well, you, you need, you also need to talk about Rushmore versus the core. Uh, currently in the budget, we just have Rushmore being built with Core Phase Two being designed. If the council would like to change that, we will need to know and, and move those numbers around.
I vote for the Core.
I would, I would like to hear Tammy ask why she was doing Rushmore, how do you report?
Yeah, and can we, let's back up on the Core and the Rushmore area a little bit. So about two years ago, we all decided that both of these projects were top priority and that they needed to get done. Sylvan Circle, if you remember, that took ten-ish years. And then we did Brandon Park Edition, which is just a continuation of Sylvan Circle. And then that's just what Rushmore is too. But one thing about Rushmore is we needed to kind of slow down because there were a lot of drainage issues to work through. And I think that is really why we decided we wanted to do Rushmore in three phases, but that we would start with the Core and then go back over to Rushmore. That was kind of the reasoning behind that. So as we were going through the Core, we did a rush design. We got through construction. We have a really good project, but we've had near-perfect weather as well. And so we haven't started design yet because, to be honest, I didn't think we were going to get Phase One C done this year. And we're still kind of pushing it, but I think it's going to get done just fine. And I don't think we should use that as, as kind of the example, because moving on, I mean, next year it's going to rain, I think. And when we do these big projects, we really need to take a whole year to design and then we need to take almost two years to construct. Because this year, we had the continuation of Holly Boulevard, along with the Interceptor project that was going down Main, plus we had the Core area. We had a lot of contractors to try to get them to all work together and to coordinate that effort. And we were really lucky this year that those contractors worked really well together. Because there were a lot of times where I had to go to H and W and say, hey, can you do this so that Sioux Cup can work on that? And can Sioux Cup, can you do this now so that H and W can do that? And it causes issues when you start doing that. You're holding contractors up at different times that they weren't planning on and that that wasn't in the plans for them. So I know we're all kind of like, oh, why is the H and W done yet in front of the lumberyard? But they had to do a lot of stuff for Sioux Cup too, to keep the Core area going. So when we're planning these projects, we really need to be mindful of that. It takes a whole year to design. We have to talk to property owners. We have to get construction easements. We have to talk to them about their sidewalks and their driveways and what trees are going to be replaced and that sort of thing. So as we're moving through this, we have Rushmore designed. It's past sixty percent plans. We were going to have a public meeting on the 22nd and we could send out temporary easements tomorrow. Like, it is right on schedule, ready to go. We can bid it super early and hopefully we get really good prices on that. So the Core area, we'd really like to wait until after the first of the year to start designing that second phase. Because with that second phase, we have a lot of drainage issues in that area to work out. And we're going to have to talk to those property owners multiple times in order to get those figured out. Because if you go at Third and Elm, where a lot of that drainage comes down, that's just south of the elementary school. It goes behind a lot of their buildings or a lot, behind a lot of their homes. And we don't have a drainage easement through there. We don't own that property. In order to keep our, like, that's the natural drainage path and we don't design for a storm sewer that's over a five-year event. So when we get hit really hard, all that water's still going to overtop and go back behind those homes. And we need to make sure that we have our bases covered here so that we have the drainage easements and we own the land. And that's just going to take some time to work through. So I'm sure we can push it forward and keep moving it on, but there's going to be a lot of headaches involved if we do that. And I don't think that's fair to the residents and I don't think that's fair to us either. We're going to pay a lot more in design fees because there's no way that I can get that many contemporary construction easements on my own. There's also going to be a lot of things that would have to change out when we're doing construction. And when we do that, then we're at the mercy of the contractor and we're going to pay extra. Plus, there's no way we're going to be able to bid it early. We're going to be probably towards the end of March before we can bid it and so we're going to see higher bid prices as well. So we can certainly do it, but it's going to be a lot more expensive and there's going to be a lot more headaches.
Are the late, can we make it more sense of those years? We always hear about how every year when we do a project, those materials prices go up. And we're talking about buying materials, how can we, should we fight some of that, what's that impact?
You know, we do say that, that, yeah, there's a little bit of, yeah, materials probably will go up. We never know about like asphalt and concrete in the market and, you know, does Sioux Falls have a big job or is Minnehaw County going to have another big job, that sort of thing? Like, all of those kind of weigh into that. But when you start looking at, if you're going to have HDR do, you know, the construction easements, we're probably going to pay two, three hundred thousand dollars more. Like, that's just the way it is. Plus, we're going to bid it late. That's going to be expensive. So I think those numbers add up pretty fast.
Plus, we plan on bidding out Rushmore November, December of this year, which should get us good prices on that and you're going to save money on that.
Well then, you know, I, I am a real proponent of the Core, because we promised people that, um, that you're a good argument to Rushmore. But I think we have to be very, very sensitive and careful about putting this information out and then changing it. Because I think we're going to have a lot of disappointed people. It puts it on everybody's face and it's just, and we just have to be, I think we need to be more careful. Because I am not happy if we have to pull back on the Core, because we said we're going to do that. It makes sense. It sounds like that would make sense, but, boy.
So on, so on the, on that note though, we have sent mailings out to the Rushmore area saying that we were going to do construction on Phase One this year.
And what you've been in the press that, you know?
I think that's a problem. Everybody in the Core area has thought about Rushmore on the council, but still, we're going to do the Core, Phase Two, yes. And then all of a sudden shows up in the paper that we're done.
And some of that is my fault. When I was talking to the paper, I said, they wanted to do a story on the schedule of the construction projects. And they said, well, some of that could change. And if you read the very, like, last little bit of the article, it said, council hasn't decided, depends on budget, that sort of thing. But I think that got missed in the overall article. So, yeah.
I'll make it real quick. So the costs, when I went back, because I was a little surprised when we started talking about the cost increase in the Core area projects. So I went back and read through the RFP and what we had submitted for our proposal. There was one line in there that said, we were basing, we were trying to justify or base our fee for the preliminary design from the Sylvan Circle projects and the cost per lineal foot was what we were estimating. Because of the experience that I had with that, it was roughly four fifty to five hundred bucks a foot. And so when we looked at the overall Core area, the preliminary design, that's what we were basing our initial judgment on. Since then, we had a significant amount of coordination with the city council. Mayor was part of the study advisory team. Staff, you know, Raleigh and Brian and Tammy and Christina in our study advisory team are our design. And we start, we designed the streets to be thirty-three feet wide. We added sidewalk on both sides. That was not being assessed to property owners. When you do that, you have to grade back into people's yards and driveways and that cost goes up significantly because of those decisions that was made. And so we were doing the preliminary design congruent with the Phase One design. We were still making decisions on Phase One through February till we bid the project. So we submitted a revised cost estimate of the Core area, Phases Two through Five in February to the city. It was part of coordination meetings that we had. Those are still the same numbers.
But we did out every phase, right? So now Phase Two, you guys have the option to bid along with everybody else, is that right?
No, 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 we're consultant. That's, yeah, that's, you're talking contractors.
Right, we've bid our set of plans for each individual phase. Yeah, to multiple contractors.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
And I agree with everything Tammy said. I mean, that, these projects, we were very, very blessed to have really good weather this year. We've been fortunate to have a contractor that was aggressive. No, I know. And so when you look at, we, we knew going into these phases, they're large. Yep, agreed. It's going to be, yep. We're fortunate to be in Phase One C. We got three phases of construction this year done. Not done yet, but we, we've been very fortunate. Those phases are large. We.
Are, are the following phases going to be about as large as this one?
That's correct.
If you want to be that aggressive, let's wait until we go through our whole capital improvement plan before we make those decisions.
Yeah, and we talked about breaking it up if we could. I mean, it would, the time reflected in what we would do in design, we could do Second Avenue and just Second Avenue. But it, it's, those are tough decisions. You guys have to make those and you got to make those with staff recommendations. We feel like we can get Phase Two designed, but it's going to be, it would be a stretch, just like Phase One and Tammy's, Tammy's. Oh, yeah, yep. To design it and to get the project built, we can break it off, but you're still, you know, it's, Phase Two was supposed to be the entire Second, Third, Fourth Avenue. But Tammy's right. We have done a lot of construction discussions with property owners and behind the sidewalk stuff that if we can, if we have time to plan for that, we can have additional services at your disposal. Tammy's busy too and for her to get in front of those property owners and we have a hundred and twenty property owners per phase. That's a lot. That's a lot of negotiations, a lot of discussion for one person. Do you have any other questions about costs though? That, I mean, when we made those decisions, that's, this project is more expensive than residential projects that you've done in the past. You add, you add sidewalk to a.